They do it every year this time? Okay.
We're on.
All right, it is time to start our City Council and Planning Commission meeting. We are talking about chapters one through five of the Unified Development Code and establishing of zoning districts and use standards. And this is for our comprehensive planning for 2040 Vision Picture Canyon City. Do we turn the time over to you, Patrick?
Well, before I hand things over to Jackie Wells, who has a presentation to give about this, I wanted to offer a few comments. First of all, to let you know that John Hammack and I did have a meeting last week where we sat down and went through some of his wordsmithing changes, punctuation errors, making sure that there was a consistency in the way certain phrases were used if they were sort of in repetitive sections. And all those comments went off to House Seal Levine last week. So those kinds of wordsmithing things, I think we've got fairly well sorted at this point. But if you find things that you'd like, I would ask that you could, you know, put those into an email and get ahold of me outside of this particular meeting forum, because I think what would better serve our time this evening would be if we could kind of focus on some of the policy issues. So what you're seeing in this section of the new Unified Development Code, and remember, one of the outcomes of this effort is going to be a unified zoning subdivision and development set of regulations that are consistent with what the master plan is recommending for us as well. So these are the chapters pertaining to zoning, the establishment of the zoning districts, the use standards for particular uses, the height and bulk limitations within the uses, and then it's breaking it out by Euclidean zone districts, which are, you know, the traditional form of zoning, where you've got, you know, lots, minimum lot sizes and whatnot. And then we've got the form-based zone districts, which in Canyon City's case are the riverfront zoning districts. So with that in mind, I wanted to make sure you were aware that there has not really been a significant amount of change made to the text of what we have in our current zoning standards right now. What we've done is reformatted and reorganized it to give it a bit more of a logical flow. And that is ultimately what we'd like to chat with Planning Commission and Council this evening, to make sure you're comfortable with this, to introduce some policy questions about some of the changes that have gone in there. And even as Councilmember Hammack commented to me when we met last week, even though some of the provisions that we've got in there aren't changing, maybe it's time to ask, should they change? So.
Okay. Do we need to do roll call? Are you doing that, Ryan? Sorry.
Yeah, and we've got Denise on, and Denise, if you don't mind calling roll, please.
Certainly. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor Ashley Smith? Mayor Protem Hammack? Councilmember Dennehy? Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Hockes? Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Brandon Smith? Chairman Maloney?
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement? Commissioner Ladue?
I believe he's online.
He is online.
Okay, that's what I thought. Commissioner Soother?
Here.
And Commissioner Randy Smith? Okay. Guess what's up then?
All right, back to you, Patrick.
So those really conclude the comments that I had to introduce this. And what I'd like to do now is turn the meeting over to Jackie Wells, who has been our contact at House Seal Levine, working on the code side of this project, the Unified Development Code side of this project.
I just want to point out that Chairman Maloney just got on.
You're still on mute, Jackie.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Go ahead and show my screen. See if you're able to see the presentation.
Did Denise hear that?
I've got it.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead. Yes, we can see it.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners, Councilmembers, for having us again on here this evening. We're excited to be showing you the first five draft articles of the new UDC. So let's jump right in. So tonight, we're going to go through a really brief process recap for the two projects for the Canyon City 2040, and then the project overview for the UDC, and then get into the draft chapter. So that'll really be the meat of our presentation this evening, and then we'll have a brief discussion of our next steps in the project. So as you all know, the Picture Canyon City 2040 project includes both the comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Code, so the update to the city's land development regulations. So just a couple of weeks ago, we were meeting with you all to go through the land use plan and some of the other recommendations that are going to be included in the comprehensive plan. And you'll see a lot of that threaded through the proposed recommendations, proposed changes to the regulations. So we're really trying to align the city's land development regulations with those recommendations in the comprehensive plan. As far as our scope of work, we're really working through the project in step five for the comprehensive plan, creating those preliminary core elements, and then in step nine for development regulations. So this evening, we'll be looking at the first five articles of the UDC out of 12, so about halfway through the full code. So a brief project overview, so far, we've met twice about the UDC, first in October to discuss the diagnostic report. And that report really looked at your existing regulations, you know, chapter by chapter, section by section, identifying all of those issues and opportunities within the existing code to identify what needs to be changed, what needs to move forward, you know, what's really working for the city and what isn't. So based on the feedback we received from you all, the confirmation that we were really hitting the right notes and, you know, needing to tweak a couple of others, we brought back the preliminary recommendations memo to you all in December. So this really introduced our proposed direction for the UDC and how we recommended the existing regulations be tweaked and updated and new regulations that needed to be introduced and established. So based on your feedback in the preliminary recommendations presentation, we've incorporated all of that into the draft articles we'll be presenting to you this evening. So as we presented in the preliminary recommendations memo, we're proposing there be a 12-chapter structure to the UDC. So this structure is really meant to help walk people through the development process, be much more user-friendly. So as this graphic on the right-hand side of the screen shows, it's meant to be a funnel to really help direct and guide people to the end, you know, process that they need. So we start off with our most broad sections, the things that really set up the code and the usability of it, those items that most commonly people think of as zoning. And then you get through the more specific, more focused areas of the code, your development standards, science standards, and then all of your processes. So tonight, we'll be looking at our first five chapters. So these are really in those purple and dark blue sections of our funnel, so it's our more broad or more general sections of the code. All right, so jumping right into our draft chapters overview, just like Patrick said, there isn't any major changes that are being introduced in these sections, really focusing on reformatting these first five chapters, making them much more user-friendly moving forward. So for chapter one, our general provisions, so this section includes the title, intent, purpose, interpretation, so really those sections of the existing regulations that set up the defensibility of the code. So again, we're not proposing any major changes here. The revisions that were made were to update references, clean up grammatical inconsistencies, et cetera, so really just clean up to chapter one. Moving into chapter two, this chapter includes all of the district and purpose and intent statements for the base districts, the riverfront districts, and the overlay districts. So this is tying together some various sections of your existing code. So we're proposing that the purpose and intent statements be revised to better reflect the land use categories that are proposed to be included in the comprehensive plan. So there have been some minor tweaks to the purpose and intent statements to better align those two categories. We are introducing three major changes to this chapter. The first is the establishment of the neighborhood commercial district, the establishment of the business park district, and then a clarification between the planned development district and the planned development overlay district. And just a reminder, we're not proposing any changes to the city zoning map at this time. These new districts that are proposed to be established are really just meant to be another tool in the city's toolbox as it works to implement the new comprehensive plan. It has these new districts to help guide developers and property owners as they look to redevelop or develop their land. So the neighborhood commercial district, this is the purpose and intent statement here, it's broken up to really help punch up those points that really make this new district unique from your other commercial districts. So it's intended to offer access to goods and services that residents and the general public need on a day-to-day basis in close proximity to residential neighborhoods without negatively impacting quality of life. So it's really meant to be neighborhood-serving for those, you know, those daily shopping needs, to go pick up a gallon of milk, to get a cup of coffee on your way to work, et cetera. Next, we have the business park district. So this is intended to provide and preserve areas for master-planned office environments in a campus or park-like setting. So there currently isn't a district that would allow for or that would accommodate this type of development. You would be looking at either the general commercial district or the light industrial district, if someone was wanting to do sort of a master-planned type of campus, or likely it'd be a planned development district. So wanting to establish this base district to allow for the type of business park development that's envisioned in the comprehensive plan. So next, we have the clarification between the planned development district and the planned development overlay district. So one of the things that we heard throughout the outreach process was there was confusion and the lack of clarity between these two processes. So we're proposing that they be established in chapter two, along with the other districts in the city, and that their purpose and intent statements really help to clarify at the beginning, at the onset of someone's experience with the code, what, how these two processes are different. So the planned development district process is meant to accommodate on sites 10 acres or more in size, so this larger land areas within the city. Innovative approaches to development that align with the comprehensive plan but do not generally conform to the requirements of the city's standard and riverfront districts. So these would be, you know, really innovative, new types of development that the zoning districts don't really accommodate currently. So it's things we couldn't foresee, and they don't have any base zoning that they could tweak or play off of. So it would be that fully new zoning district for these developments. And then we also have the planned development overlay district, and this is meant to accommodate smaller sites, smaller developments, that are still innovative approaches that align with the comprehensive plan, but they do generally conform to the requirements of the city's standard and riverfront districts. But they require deviations from those underlying standards to achieve that higher level of design and amenity that they're hoping to achieve through the planned development overlay district process. So we're not removing any tools from your tool belt, we still have these two processes available, but we're just helping to clarify the difference between the two and when one might be appropriate over the other. Any questions on chapter two before we move into chapter three?
Hey, go ahead.
All right. So chapter three is our standard district-specific standards. So this includes yard and bulk requirements as well as permitted uses. So it does have a lot of the supplementary provisions that are currently included in chapter 1720 of your current zoning code. So 1720 has a lot of, sort of a random mix of regulations, right? Patrick, I think, refers to it as the junk drawer of the zoning code. So you'll see some references to 1720 in a couple of the different chapters we're reviewing tonight, just because it does have such a crazy combination of different regulations. So in addition to the yard and bulk requirements and those supplementary provisions, chapter three also includes the table of permitted conditional and special review uses. So there's one table for residential uses and another for non-residential uses. And we do, again, have three major changes proposed for this chapter, so starting with the R2 district, minimum lot area and lot width requirements, permitted encroachments into required yards, and then modernized uses. So you'll recall when we were going through the preliminary recommendations presentation that we had recommended that the R2 district minimum lot area and lot width requirements be reduced based on the nonconformities analysis that we performed. So the nonconformities analysis compared the existing lot area and lot width minimums for the R2 district with the actual development in the R2 district that's on the ground today. So when we did this analysis, it revealed that about 25% of existing single-family detached development in the R2 district and about 31% of existing single-family attached development in the R2 district were not conforming with that, with the existing standards. So as we ran through different iterations to see which minimum would really best suit the existing development, we landed at 5,000 square feet being suitable for both single-family detached and single-family attached development. So we're proposing that the R2 lot area minimum be reduced to 5,000 square feet. Say, very similar with the lot width, there isn't varying lot width requirements for the single-family detached versus single-family attached like there is for the lot area, but we found that 39% of the existing parcels were not conforming with the current requirement, and that if we brought it down to 45 feet, then it would bring that nonconformity level down to about 17%. So not only will these proposed changes help existing development conform to the standards, really reduce the number of variation requests that are received, or the number of, you know, requests for letters of zoning compliance that Patrick receives, it will also help streamline your residential zoning districts. So these existing standards are very similar to the standards for the R1 district. I mean, as we get higher in the numbers after the R, we want to have the higher-density development. So in the R1 district, you have your lower-density development, and R2 should be your mid-density development. This will help to streamline that process. For permitted encroachments into required yards.
Oh, just a second, we have a question.
Sure. Could you back up one slide, please?
Sure.
And could you talk to us a little bit about, so you've done the study of what we've got, you've done the studies of what adjustments we can make to, with, I'm assuming, bringing, with a goal, and it's just that a goal, I believe, of bringing everybody into conformance, so that they're legally conforming with zoning regulations. But the, so, but can you talk to us a little bit about, like, for instance, on the single-family attached lot area minimum, the pluses and minuses, the upside-downside of choosing 17 over 10% or 10% over 17%?
Certainly. So in addition to analyzing the lot size minimums and how to bring those down as much as possible to minimize nonconformities where we could, we also took a look at what would happen if we did bring down those lot sizes. So if we brought it down to 5,000 square feet and 4,500 square feet, would that create new opportunities for subdivision? And we found that there were greater opportunity for subdivision when we, excuse me, reduced it to 4,500 square feet and a 40-foot lot width versus the 5,000 square feet. So the opportunities for subdivision would be lots that are two times the lot width and the lot area that's being proposed to be reduced to. And we wanted to avoid those new opportunities for subdivision to ensure that these changes wouldn't alter the character of your established neighborhoods. So these changes will really minimize the level of nonconformity without changing how your existing neighborhoods are really built out, that development pattern.
Thank you. I think I understand that, and that, and that, so really, you're using your professional experience and providing us an opinion of where the appropriate dividing line is, because obviously, if we took it down to 3,000 square feet, you know, which would be really, really tiny, that we might not have anybody nonconforming, but then we'd have 3,000 square-foot lots, which might be really nasty.
It would certainly be a change. It would certainly be a change.
Yeah, and the existing neighborhoods could be totally clobbered by that.
Exactly. It could really encourage people tearing down existing homes, subdividing lots even further, and creating a sort of a neighborhood that you wouldn't recognize. So we really want to encourage that those stable neighborhoods, they continue to have that development pattern they have currently, but really reduce that burden on residents, on those property owners for their nonconformities. You know, when you try to get a bank note or a loan, you have to get confirmation from the city on whether you're nonconforming and can rebuild, you know, those types of annoyances or burdens, we're trying to minimize those for property owners.
And I should add, we, the city currently has a process right now that gives homeowners, and in particular lenders, mortgage offers, a certain amount of comfort to the fact that if they have a lot that is legal nonconforming because of its size or because of its front-yard width along the street, we can issue what we call a rebuild letter. There's a little bit of a process, it's completely administrative, but at that point, we have given them written notification from the city that should something happen to the home, including the homeowner themselves deciding that, okay, this is a 120-year-old home that's just too small, we would like to scrape it off and rebuild so that it's got modern appliances, they can do that, even though they are currently legal nonconforming to setbacks or lot width or whatever the nonconformity is. And that won't change, that will still be there for these situations where you can see 17% may, you know, still not be conforming.
But it will make it easier, it will make it easier for the city to issue those letters and for people to redevelop their lots if they so desire.
Well, in theory, there will be a lot fewer of those letters to be issued because we're bringing more people into the conforming category.
Right.
Are you, I see, you know, there's several alternatives, and you have highlighted the one that appears to be the most ideal. Do you just need like a nod from council, like, yeah, we think that's right, or is that?
Yes, what we're, this is, this is one of those policy questions that I was bringing up earlier. So we would like, you know, basically waving of hands and a blessing.
Mandy did the jazz hands. So it looks good. I definitely like the idea of bringing people into the fold of conformity for ease for all parties.
Well, and plus, I'd like to say, you know, understanding what House Seal Levine is trying to do and the expertise they bring to this matter, you know, I'm certainly not willing to substitute my judgment for theirs and look to them to provide us, you know, outcomes such as this so that we can get the best code that we can, and so I'm thumbs up.
Councilman Reed?
So I just had a question. So this is specifically referring to the R2 district minimum. So because I know right now we have issues with needing more housing in our area, so in, like, the high-density districts, this is all going to look different, right? I just want to make sure I'm understanding, like, this isn't all lots throughout everything, it's just.
This is just for the R2 zone district.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding, because I was like, well, we need to some have, fit more houses closer together in some areas, because we need more houses really bad, so I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Yeah, so this is just applicable to the R2 district. When we took a look at the R1 and the R1A, we found that those existing development really does conform with the standards, so that does seem to be a good fit for what's on the ground currently. And then you also have your multifamily districts that allow for even higher-density development than this. So definitely is a nice range of districts that are available for development to create that greater housing diversity that's needed and also, you know, recommended highly in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Not yet.
Not yet. All right, well, let's keep going, then.
All right, so moving in to chapter four, I'm sorry, skipped ahead. Permitted encroachments into required yards. So we're expanding what those permitted encroachments can be. So these are things, you know, you have your yard setbacks, your front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, these would be things that would be allowed to be located within those setback areas. So unenclosed porches, egress window wells, temporary ADA ramps. These have all been added to really accommodate requests that you all have been receiving, and then also safety things like the egress window wells and ADA ramps. This is going to help reduce the number of variations that are requested. I think the unenclosed porches is one that you all hear pretty frequently, so helping to reduce the workload for you all and also the burden on residents to go through that And then last but not least, for chapter three, we have our modernized uses. So the uses for your existing districts are listed for all of the different districts separately, so we're consolidating all of those into one table. And then when we did so, we found that there were a lot of redundant uses that were listed in the code. So things like retail goods was listed for one district, and then retail commercial use is listed for the other. So that can be tricky when you don't have good definitions to help clarify or distinguish the two uses. So instead of having those two that are so similar, having them separate, we combined them into a general retail category. We also had restaurant with or without drive-through and eating and drinking establishment. So those were two uses that were listed in two different districts that'll just be combined to a restaurant use. We're also proposing some new uses to be included, community gardens, multifamily dwelling complex, so more than one multifamily building in a development, breweries, wineries, and distilleries, artisan manufacturing, so really small-scale industry, things like a small-scale bakery are those type of artisan manufacturing that would be allowed in that district, and then solar energy collection systems. So we have standards for solar energy collection, canopies, for roof-mounted systems, and for ground-mounted systems. All right, any questions on the modernized uses or the permitted yard encroachments before we move into the riverfront district standards?
I have a question, ma'am. Okay, my question is basically probably semantics, anything else, but in your chapter three, on page two, there's a, there's a table, basically, 1703-010B, and it talks about the height requirements or standards, I guess. And I was kind of curious as to the, as far as the general construction and the central business, down there, it says building standards maximum, the height, you've got in a couple of those boxes, three boxes of 100. Now, a story is basically 10 feet, is that correct? So what does the 100 stand for? Is that 100?
The 100 would be 100 feet in height, so it would be about a 10-story building. We do have, and these are your existing maximum height standards, we didn't propose any tweaks there, but there are some footnotes that would be tied to the central business, 100-foot height maximum, and that would be for between Third and Eighth Streets.
Right.
Any building, so it does have a qualifier there for that development downtown.
That's where I see between Third and Eighth Street, you said shall not exceed three stories, then there's a little caveat there that fourth or more stories can be authorized through a special process. So we're saying we could allow a 10-story building on Main Street there? Is that what you're authorizing?
So this is what your existing code allows, and we didn't hear any issues with the current maximum height standards or any concerns that that was, you know, allowing for development that was too tall. So we didn't propose any changes. But of course, if that's something that we want to reconsider, revisit, this is exactly the right time to do so.
I was just kind of looking at the future. If we were doing 2040, I don't know if a 10-story building on Main Street might be, I don't know. Anyway, that was my big question, if that was just a typo or if that's something we can work on, or, I mean, I might be in the minority there, but anyway, I just want some clarification.
That is existing. I don't know, that'd be someday in Canyon City if somebody wanted to put in a 10-story building downtown.
Between Third and Eighth Street, it could be a hotel, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I think with the comprehensive plan, there will likely be recommendations about development downtown, the character of that, and how it should be, you know, consistent with the with the existing historic character. So through the special review use process, if it's determined, you know, one of those standards of review for that process would be alignment with the comprehensive plan. So if the proposed development, you know, if they're asking for five stories, six stories, and that's really not consistent with the historic look and feel of the downtown as, you know, is recommended and desired to be continued in the downtown in the comprehensive plan, that could be one tool for you all to say, that's really not what we're looking for, that's really not what the downtown needs or what the city has envisioned for the downtown going forward. So you would have that sort of tool in your tool belt through the special review use process to really require that that be more consistent with the development that is there currently.
And that's.
But I understand if we want to reduce that to kind of take that question out of the, off the table.
But that is how staff has always interpreted the fact that the central business district has this, you know, 100-foot height, which in a commercial context would equate to about seven stories for a building, but there's an appropriateness question, which is why it's a special review use that must go to hearings before planning commission and council to confirm that it is in fact not creating these spillover effects that are going to damage the fabric of the rest of the neighborhood or the rest of the district.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments about the proposed changes to chapter three? Sounds like we can move into chapter four, the Riverfront District specific standards. So we heard from the very beginning of the process that the Riverfront District standards were something that the city really likes, it was something, you know, recently passed amendment to the zoning code that really wanted to be carried forward. So we're not proposing any major changes to the content of the regulations. The changes we are proposing, though, would restructure the existing regulations to be more intuitive and user-friendly, to have a very similar structure as the rest of the zoning code, so it's very familiar as you're trying to work your way through it, of, you know, what's going to be next. So there were two areas where we wanted to clarify regulations, the first one being the reduction that's allowed for multifamily units if that, if they are affordable. So currently, there isn't any language in that section of the code that would really be a tool for the city to enforce that affordability kind of caveat to the parking reduction. So what we're proposing would be to add in language that would only, this parking reduction would only be available to deed-restricted affordable units, so that there is some guarantee that those affordable units remain affordable moving forward, and it's not just affordable so you can get the parking reduction and then, you know, next year, the rates go back up to market. We are also proposing that the flexible banner sign standards be enhanced to include a ground-mounted option, so currently you have fence-mounted and wall-mounted, but there wasn't a ground-mounted option, and we thought that that was missing and wanted to include that as another option if that was desirable to you all and to the city. So any questions or comments on the proposed changes to the clarification, to the multifamily parking reduction, or to the enhancement to the flexible banner sign standards, or to the restructuring of the chapter in general?
There doesn't appear to be any questions, although are we checking for those online to see if they're raising their hand or anything like that?
Doesn't look like it from what I can see.
Okay. Well, if you are online, please do raise your hand and so we can make sure that we can hear from you, too.
All right, so moving right along to chapter five, the use-specific standards. So again, this consolidates a lot of the standards from chapter 1720 or that junk drawer of your existing zoning code. So we are proposing some minor updates to your current standards, things like mobile home parks, those are proposed to be, those standards are proposed to be kind of expanded or enhanced to also address tiny home developments, that's been something, that's been of interest to the city, that they've, you all have received requests or, you know, interest in tiny home development, but there really wasn't a mechanism in your current code to allow for that. So by expanding the mobile home parks standards to allow for tiny homes, it would be, you know, an extra tool in your tool belt to address those. For kennels, we're proposing that these be the outdoor use of, you know, dog runs or other types of play spaces for animals, that hours of operation be established to ensure that they aren't a nuisance to neighbors. And then for accessory dwelling units, we're proposing a couple of additional design standards to help ensure that those units, those new units, don't alter or change the character of neighborhood as it's seen from the public right-of-way. We're also proposing some new standards for uses, that are for new uses that we're proposing to include, so community gardens, just to ensure that you don't have things overgrown, that things are maintained well, and that those don't become a nuisance to neighbors moving forward. Multifamily dwelling complexes, proposed standards would help ensure that these larger developments really have the look and feel that we've heard expressed as desirable in Canyon City moving forward. So things like the front entrances oriented towards the street rather than the parking lot, or oriented towards open spaces, open, public gathering spaces to create more of a neighborhood pedestrian-oriented type feel, to really help, you know, foster community. Then for artisan manufacturing, this would just clarify what is allowed in an artisan manufacturing space, these are often live-work environments, there often is a small retail component, so helping to clarify, you know, what those distinctions need to be between the residential space, the retail space, and the actual industrial manufacturing space. And then finally, for our solar energy collection systems, we have different standards for the different types of systems that we're proposing be included, so for the solar energy collection system canopy, so those would be, you might see them in a parking lot, providing cover and also collecting, you know, solar energy. So the standards would be for the minimum clearance to ensure that emergency vehicles can still go through them, the maximum height, the angle, et cetera. All right, any questions on the proposed changes to your current new specific standards or any that are proposed to be established?
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question, I mean, and I'm just kind of looking here, are most of these are standards already?
Yes.
Okay, so really, we're not looking at any changes, nothing of this has been changed?
We are, for the vast majority of what's in these chapters, we are not proposing wholesale changes, but again, that is a policy question. If there are some practices that the city has now that you think maybe we ought to reexamine if this is appropriate, this is absolutely the time to bring that up.
Well, House Laveen, I mean, you've already pointed out a couple of things that you had recommendations of changing, did anything else stick out to you that we would need, should take into consideration?
I think the majority of the things that stuck out were, was more of a lack of standard than a standard that needed to be revised. So I think that the real major changes to this chapter would be the new use standards that are proposed for some of the new uses that are being included. So that was probably the biggest change, you'll see that the majority of the new uses that are proposed also have corresponding use standards. So those are the major changes, I think, to this chapter. The current new standards, we've heard, you know, haven't heard any issues or complaints about them generally, but making minor updates, minor tweaks, like I said, to kennels to ensure they're not a nuisance to neighbor by establishing those operating hours, those types of minor changes, just to help ensure that all of these uses are compatible in the city moving forward.
Council, number eight?
So Patrick, so much of this is going to ultimately come down to you to execute, how do you feel about this? I mean, do you feel like it's clear, concise, that you are comfortable with the minor changes that we made, that it's user-friendly, I mean, all of those things, do you feel good about it?
Yes, well, one of the things that this does right away, I mean, if you look at the way our code is organized now and try to read through, for instance, C general commercial or R2, and the, you know, the very thing, how it's structured in terms of finding out what uses are permitted, what your height and bulk limitations are, it's, it looks like it has its origins dating back to the 1960s or 70s. This is updating it so that it's much more graphically friendly, you get an image to describe what the code is telling you, this is your front yard setback, and you get an image showing how you determine setbacks. So I think for folks who might not have a lot of development experience and want to know something about this, in case they're thinking about doing an addition to their house, this is a much easier code to understand, the way it's being drafted. We aren't making wholesale changes to this, we're simply making tweaks to see what we find are kind of shortcomings that the code currently isn't doing. And then I think what we're trying to do is, by and large, 1720, she's referred to it, I've used the term the junk drawer. At a, at a meeting we had where our city attorney was present, she once described Title 17 as having been Frankensteined into existence, and 1720 is a big reason for why that, why that has that reputation. Anytime a situation came up with some sort of a new type of a land use or a policy question that came about because no one had ever encountered this situation before, an ordinance was written, it got dropped into 1720, and it made 1720 this behemoth that was really unwieldy. Now what we're doing is consolidating the items that have to do with particular uses that may be, you know, even if they're permitted, but, you know, for instance, mobile home parks, those standards have now been moved into one section, chapter five, and they come with the graphics and they come with a much easier understanding of how they're unfolding. So yes, I myself find this a much easier code to read and follow, and that's one of the things that I wanted feedback from council on, do you concur? Do you think, whatever layer of experience you have in having worked with the land use code before, do you think this is simplified and easier to understand?
I mean, I feel like for me, it is, it actually takes something that's pretty convoluted and streamlines it enough to make sense, where even if I don't know, you know, what R2 is, I feel like I can go in there and say, okay, this is what it is, and come out with at least enough to be able to have an intelligent conversation and know what questions I need to ask for further understanding, which I think is a vast improvement to where it was. My other question was, is this layout similar to what other municipalities are using now when people are going out on the internet and they're searching and they're looking for these things to understand what development opportunities there are? I mean, do you feel like this layout is comparable with that as well?
The trend to go with more graphics and more tables in zoning codes and for, you know, in subdivision regulations as well, I think has been increasing, there's been an increase in the desirability to do this in municipalities since at least the 1990s. And I think as computer graphics have gotten easier to draw and manipulate, that that trend has only increased. I think the only real issue we're going to have with this is we may have to find a new house to publish our code because these graphics are something that I'm not sure the company we're currently using is going to be all that skilled at, they're a bit more traditional in how they handle code publishing.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
And we're currently looking at that as well, so.
Oh, good, thanks.
And I'd like to say, there's kind of a second side to the coin here also, the, you know, it's been, council has told ourselves that we're, we want, we want a simple, understandable code so that people can come in and use it to their profit and to our profit. But, but the flip side to that coin is, is that, is that not every planning commission member, not every city council person is familiar with the ins and outs of a code, and if you have it so that you can easily look at it, it's a lot easier from an administration standpoint or a semi-judicial standpoint, if we want to say that, to have something like that in front of you to work off of, to be able to help inform your decisions as you're, as you're going forward.
Well, we have Commissioner Smith and then.
I've got one more, oh, go ahead.
It's related to their comments, if you don't, if you don't mind. So, you know, the, the idea of 1720, the junk drawer, you know, it, it does create a lot of the issues that we do have, the aha moments, oh, you missed this, or oh, you're adding this on, you know, why wasn't it caught before? And, you know, a lot of that is because you got stuff that's tucked away in these additional chapters and, you know, it gets missed, or you have to go and you have to flip back and forth in order to make sure that you've got everything that you need in order to, you know, approve, you know, whatever it is that might be, you know, an applicant might be trying to do. You know, these changes, you know, that, are meant to address those types of issues. So again, it's streamlining those issues and trying to make it easier to use and more business-friendly.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith?
Okay, I think it's a, I think we've come a long way, and it's, for me, I think a lot of government regulations are boring to read most of the time, but this is actually pretty, like you said, streamlined, which is probably a negative to me because now I can point out some more things that I'm finding to fix. So I just have one more and then I'll let it go, but in chapter four, I was kind of wondering why we're not allowing polyester awnings, because polyester being a synthetic material reflects the sun and all that, and I didn't know if House Laveen knows nationwide of another material other than what I was kind of researching, because as far as awnings, acrylic fiber is obviously the best, it's synthetic, you can use cotton, but it fades, but polyester awnings are relatively used all over the nation. So I was wondering why, at least in two places, we're saying no polyester awnings. Is that something that's just been carried over as well, or is that something we can look at?
It is definitely something you can look at, this was carried over, and I, I was not as hands-on with the formation of the Riverfront zoning districts, but I would speculate that a big reason why the, you know, the hard materials for awnings were excluded was for design preferences.
Well, I'm going to say that's exactly what that was when we formulated that.
I remember going back last summer when we were doing signs and polls and everything else, and I, I'm sorry, I guess this just slipped my mind, but rereading all this over again, and like I said, I do like it, so the first five chapters, I do appreciate all the work that everybody has done, and I think it's going to be a great addition to the city for the future.
Patrick, do you see any other recommendations of things that we may want to look at, since this is the time?
Well, I did want to draw your attention to some, and I'll hand this back over to Jackie and maybe to Catherine, in case Catherine has any comments as well, but with accessory dwelling units, one of the things that has always kind of confused me since I got here was that although we realize there is a housing shortage, accessory dwelling uses have this really prolonged process that requires hearings before planning commission and council and then adoption by ordinance, which adds a lot of time into it, it makes it a very bulky component, and I think in some people's minds, that may even serve as a disincentive to going through the process. So what we have done with this, and this was one of the things that I remember having conversations with Jackie about, is we still need to have a public process, the neighbors should still be notified that a homeowner in their neighborhood is wanting to do this, but we've scaled this back so that it's now a conditional use permit, which is administratively processed and approved. We're still going to make sure that all of the things they would have to do, like providing the parking, meeting the setbacks for that particular zone district, all of those things are still going to be checked by staff, but it no longer has to go to public hearings and, and add that length of time into the process. I wanted to make sure you were all aware of that because that was something I've been advocating for, for a while now.
No, I like that. I think I saw Commissioner Ledoux had his hand raised.
Brandon, can you pull up the chat?
Yeah, he had a question.
Question on lot coverage, chapter three, current definition is limited to structures, proposed definition includes driveways and other paved surface, is this on purpose so lot coverage percent value should be revised accordingly?
Yeah, so that is a great point, if lot coverage, if that definition is being expanded, if that's something we want to expand, we would want to take another look at the maximum lot coverages and making, to make sure that they are consistent and still allowing for the type of development that's on the ground. Conversely, we could revise that, expand a definition back to what it is currently, more of a building coverage rather than lot coverage in general.
We currently use building coverage as the, you know, maximum lot coverage definition. You can certainly keep it that way if you prefer.
Counsel? I say leave it as is.
Yeah, I like building coverage.
Anyone else? All right, what else do you, is there anything else that you have for us? Well, while we. Well, Lally, do you have a question? Sorry.
Yeah, actually, I probably, from this point on, I probably have a lot of comments here.
Okay, let's go for it.
That kind of fall into the policy arena, and not just, you know, formatting and wordsmithing and things like that. But just something I'd like to point out for all of us, you know, looking at these regulations that we're looking at establishing here, and plus with our land use, future land use planning maps that we've reviewed previously, one of the things that we're doing is looking at agricultural living as a category disappearing from within city boundaries. That that is, that is the direction, what the master plan says, that's what, where we're headed here, is that at some point in the future, it's the vision of Canyon City as expressed by us through this process that we're in here, that we're not going to, really, it comes down to kind of not allowing cattle in the city, except as an existing use. Is that, do I have, did I say that right, Patrick?
So we do have zone districts where you can have, you know, hoofed animals.
Yes.
And those are tied to, those regulations that we have right now, and I don't believe we are proposing to change them, it ties the quantity you can have to the size of the property that you have. We are not doing away with the RL, which is the lowest-density residential zone district that we have. But I think there is an assumption that, over time, a lot of these parcels that are particularly large, especially in the East Canyon area, because that's historically where a lot of farms were, are probably going to get reparsled and subdivided out, and you're probably going to see a lot fewer, a lot less desire to have those kinds of agricultural influences, at least within the city limits. Obviously, you've still got Lincoln Park, you've still got areas, you know, north of Canyon City, where that will still occur, but at least within the city limits, I think there's an anticipation that as time goes on, these uses are going to become less practical and less desirable within the city limits.
And that's by the choice of the property owner, right?
Yeah, so it's not taking away anything from existing property uses, but it is a direction, it's like our master plan, you know, that when, when changes occur, that there will be a direction to those changes.
Right, that it goes that direction.
Which, again, goes back to the comprehensive plan and what the comprehensive plan is recommending. So that's another way that these two processes are aligning.
Right. And so, this is probably for Catherine, and I looked at the, at our, so in Chapter Five, and we're looking at, on my page two of forty-six, the marijuana cultivation for personal use. And I had some questions on that, and I just wanted to make sure to re-ask those questions. But was, was that section established and voted on by council? Is that how we got that section?
Yep.
That was, okay.
We had an entire citizens committee working on it.
Okay. The, so, so in there, there were, there was kind of a lot of what I would call editorial comments in the regulation that bothers me. I don't like to see, I really don't like to see editorial-type comments in regulation. Here is an example, at the bottom of Page Two, we talk about rules regarding the use for cultivation and medical use, thus making the adoption of this chapter necessary. And, you know, the, above there, in the previous paragraph, the Colorado Constitution does not adequately address issues. You know, I would, I would, I would strike those kinds of words where we say adequately, as to say, "just not address," and things like that. I understand that, and maybe Catherine, this is something I could give you a call on, because there's, I have, there's lots of little instances of that through here, where we kind of set this up. And at the time, that, maybe that was appropriate, and with all of the, you know, ins and outs of establishing the use of a new drug within our community, were appropriate at the time. But, but as far as, you know, this is our chance, that if there's something that's a burr under someone's saddle, like I've got, that it might be good to get, to talk about those and see about getting them out.
I believe this was done during the John Havens days.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, so I concede some of that language, not being as necessary now as it was.
Right. Like, a couple of other interest, you know, examples, as we talk about, that does not address in any meaningful way, you know, and that's kind of an editorial comment. And so that's that particular section. So would that, would that be appropriate, Catherine, to give you a call and talk about those?
Yeah, absolutely, but just so you're aware, I mean, I think a lot of that can probably come out. There were significant concerns when both Amendment fourteen and Amendment sixteen were passed, about what was to happen, there were no rules in place, everybody was just kind of winging it. So that's probably why a lot of that is in there. So probably, more than likely, a lot of it can come out. But feel free to call me, John.
Okay. Thank you. The, and so I've got another comment. The, looking at, looking at the section on.
Can you give us a page number?
Yes. Mobile home parks. And I'm on page nine of forty-six. And we're talking about extensions or additions or modifications to existing parks at the top of the page, number two. It says, "Existing parks shall meet all current standards prior to any extension of additions to and/or modifications to the park." And the, as far as I know, the term modification is not defined anywhere, and that bothered me, because what is a modification? If you repaint your parking spaces a little bit different or something, you know, is that a modification? And so it seems to me that we need to, there needs to be some language there about what we intend by the word modifications. Okay. Got a few more. Want me to keep on going?
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's just go through them. I see all your little marks.
I've got lots of, lots of, lots of little marks. And then, now I'm in that same chapter, Chapter Five, page twenty-one of forty-six, where we're talking about boarding houses or rooming houses, and under B, a number four, it says, "The operator of a boarding or rooming house shall keep a complete record of the names of all persons residing in the boarding or rooming house, and shall make such record available for inspection to all appropriate agencies whose duties necessitate acquisition." And I was, the, it bothered me, the open-ended nature of that, you know, the, it would seem to me that we would be able to list the appropriate agencies, because, you know, what's an agency? And, you know, who was, what is appropriate inquiry of this type of information?
Why do they need to take their names down in the first place? I mean, was.
Yeah, that's another thing, too.
Is that an age-old necessity, or is that something that modern day still needs?
But is a use that you are seeing taken out of codes more and more? We didn't hear, through the outreach process, or, you know, at the initial stages of the update process, that this was something that should be removed. And we didn't want to take away, and, you know, an option from the code without having that discussion with you all. But if you don't see that as a use that's desirable in Canyon City moving forward, I definitely don't think it would be, when that would be sorely missed by, you know, a lot of the community, since it's not, you know, a use that's very common currently.
What is the intention of it?
Well, I think the nature of the use, at least once upon a time, when boarding or rooming houses were much more common, was that the people who were staying there were probably somewhat itinerant, so they could change on a, you know, who was living there could change on a relatively regular basis, and in the event of some sort of an emergency situation, you know, fire, police, first responders would probably need to know, at a minimum, how many people were there in the house. Maybe not specifically names, but at least how many people, if there was some sort of a situation they had to respond to.
Well, I have a question in regards to that, where we're talking about that area, that memo that we got yesterday from Catherine. On page three, where it talks about the banker city, they impose some regulations on it. Would that not apply to this also? We couldn't impose that?
Well, the memo that Catherine sent out, I believe, was on the subject of group homes.
That wouldn't fall into this? It's a boarding and rooming house?
Well, Catherine, help me out here, but my understanding is that group homes, and the exceptions that they have, generally fall into, either it is for the aged, it is for the developmentally disabled, or it is for, what was the third category, Catherine?
Rehabilitation.
Yeah, rehabilitation.
Yeah, so, these are not group homes, these are a separate use, and we would distinguish them if you kept this use by definition, which, you don't have the definitions yet, but they would be distinguished based upon that. So that memo does not apply to this use. This use is for people living together who don't fall under one of those group home categories.
Okay, thank you.
But I will say, you know, I think the city should consider whether it should even have this use. This was, you don't see this very often anymore, as I think's been mentioned, but, you know, this was a means to allow short-term stays in more residential structures, and so the city should consider whether it would really like those short-term stays to be in a more hotel setting, or whether they still want this to be something that's available.
What about situations like Villa Carina? Would that be considered a boarding house? Because I think they do their own cooking there, but there are people who rent rooms in a house.
But it.
So it is a use that's still happening, and then there's that other house, like on Greenwood, that also is kind of operated like a boarding house, but they all do their own cooking, but they just rent a room.
I'm not familiar with either of those. If, if, if boarding and rooming house were essentially removed as a particular use, I think to the extent that we have them in the community, they would sort of be legal non-conforming, and then the anticipation is, whenever that use ended, something that's, you know, currently permitted within the zone district would then have to take over.
Both of these are like transitional housing. So one's for people who are coming out of prison and are on probation, and it's giving them kind of an opportunity to get back into, you know, normal, everyday living, and the other one is kind of like, oh yeah, if they're at risk of being homeless or losing their home, they have a place to rent until they can get back on their feet and get a regular housing.
That is one of those policy questions.
I don't want to see making it more complicated for these homes that are helping people to get on their feet and live a good life.
Wouldn't that be kind of rehabilitative, though? It's like right on the edge.
Well, rehabilitation, in a lot of cases, implies that there's been some sort of substance abuse issue that they're recovering from. If you're dealing with someone who is, you know, in transition out of, for instance, incarceration, or someone who has had some sort of financial setback, and therefore they've lost their home, and they are temporarily trying to keep things together until they can, you know, land on their feet, the group home and boarding home is, you know, the more traditional category of this particular use. I don't think it would be considered a group home, in that the group homes under Colorado law really only include those three accepted categories.
Gotcha. So maybe keep the boarding or rooming house, but maybe get rid of item number four?
Yeah. Even number three.
And I would point out, I'd point out that also back on page nine, under the mobile homes, page nine, under management and operation, we also have a clause in there, that it should be the duty of the manager of each mobile home park to provide a registration book and keep a complete daily record of the names and addresses of documents of each mobile home admitted to the park, and the mobile home serial number, and shall furnish copies thereof to the chief of police on demand, and shall be subject to inspection by any state, county, city, police, or code enforcement officer. So we've got, there's actually two places that we've got that kind of raise the kind of almost constitutional rights issues, it is a way to, it seems to me, that, you know...
In that particular context, are we talking about like a mobile home that's not that mobile, for lack of better words? Are you talking about a RV-type mobile?
A mobile home that's not that mobile, but they, and the serial numbers, I'm assuming, because they have to meet certain requirements.
Mobile home parks, this is under mobile home parks.
Yeah, we do.
And I'm not, I'm not wondering if at one time, that didn't include like camp places for RVs, is what I'm thinking. I don't know, I'm just asking.
I would like to learn more and dig a little bit deeper, before we just strike anything out, because what if there's something where organizations need to keep track of their parolees, or if some of these people tend to be transient, they might need to keep tabs, so they make sure that they don't get lost in the cracks, and that they're well taken care of, or that the police, if they also have, tend to have people with records, that they might need to know where they are.
But it would seem that the parole officers would have that information. It shouldn't be put on the landlords of the mobile home park to do that. That seems like an awful lot of responsibility and a privacy issue there.
I think we need to talk to mobile home parks and to some of these housings, before we make any major changes that influence them, and that they have a say in.
And John Chick.
Right.
And Chief John Chick.
And Chief.
And we do annual inspections of mobile home parks, that's part of, I can't remember which chapter that's in.
Yeah, there's an annual licensing for mobile home parks, that involves code enforcement inspections to look for nuisance violations, and to ensure that they do in fact have a roster of who's living there.
And that's when I read that section, I assumed that was to enable that annual inspection that's required.
Well, I brought that issue up mainly because, in our current mobile home parks, you can rent a space for a month and park a RV in it. It's something that's less permanent.
Right.
So maybe get some information for us? Patrick, is that, and Ryan?
Mm-hmm, sure.
All right. Next tab.
Okay. Next tab. So my next comment is back on page twenty-seven, we're still Chapter Five, where we're talking about wireless service facilities. And we don't, we don't have a definition yet, but it's my understanding we're talking about basically 5G technology, where you've got a standalone transmitter that might be placed in the public right-of-way somewhere. And the, my question really goes to, is one of franchise, and this, this basically gives a wireless service facility operator options that don't involve franchise fees, or securing a franchise from the city. And so I would just ask Catherine, maybe take a look at that, and like I said, I don't know what a wireless service facility is, for sure, but isn't there, if we do have utility companies, whether it's telecommunications or whatever, utilizing the public right-of-way, doesn't there need to be some more protective language in there for the city?
No, actually, that would violate both federal and state law. So about, I want to say, three to four years ago, the state legislature adopted some very broad protections for these types of facilities in your right-of-way and on private property. And so, this is adopted in reaction to that statute, and it is very, very restrictive. I can send the memo, I think we probably sent at the time, to kind of refresh your memory, but yeah, this is as protected as you can be.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay.
And then, on page thirty-eight, the, and we're, here we're talking, what are we talking about? Oh, this is for a home-based business. Okay. And it says, in number six... And it says, in number six, it says there's no, the, no toxic, explosive, flammable, combustible, corrosive, idlogic, radioactive, or other restricted materials shall be used or stored on the site, except which are those, except those which are necessary customer that ordinarily use for household or leisure purposes. And, and the issue there, for me, having worked in, you know, facilities licensed by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, you know, for over 20 years, basically everything's radioactive. And I think that there's probably a better term rather than just the huge bucket of radioactive, because literally, you know, the, the construction materials of City Hall that City Hall is made of contain radioactive materials. And so I think that what we're trying to get at there is that they can't have licensed radioactive materials, or perhaps technologically enhanced radioactive materials. And so I would suggest that we modify that a little bit, if that's, if you think that's appropriate, Catherine.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that and refine that language.
Okay. So I would, I would suggest licensed or technologically enhanced, naturally occurring radioactive materials. And then my final one.
Okay.
Back on page 43, we're talking, we're talking about temporary use-specific standards for farmers market and flea markets. And we, Patrick and I talked about the off, the off-street parking provision there in terms of Veterans Park. And Patrick assured me that, that that would not prohibit our farmers market that we have from, from using Veterans Park. But, but what about, what about our little park right there at the corner of Ninth and 50? Would that, would that prohibit, there's not a lot of parking around there, and would that prohibit any flea market or, or farmers market activity there? And would that include like, you know, a blossom day events, setting up all the tents there?
I don't know that it would include, Blossom Festival isn't necessarily either a farmers market or a flea market. So I don't think Blossom Festival activities would fall into this particular category. I would have to do some sort of account of parking around that park that the public could actively use, and see exactly, you know, what that would portend in terms of X number of parking spaces equals a flea market or farmers market area that is so big. I don't have those numbers for you this evening.
Okay, well, the, I'm just worried that, you know, for instance, we have the Highway 50, you know, rummage sale, I guess, that, that goes on. And these are temporary use-specific standards, right? So these are, these are standards that, that would apply to events or don't apply to events?
They would apply to particularly farmers markets and flea markets. The theory is that a farmers market is not going to be operating seven days a week, or five days a week.
Right, right. I was just worried that those, that those were awfully tight.
Again, policy question, if you think we should loosen those numbers up, we can.
The, well, it, it is good to have some regulation so that we don't have, you know, chaos, chaos in our city. But, but on the other hand, I don't want to prohibit something that we've been allowing for, and seems to have been working well for quite a number of years.
So I will say, these are your existing regulations for both farmers markets and flea markets. So it sounds like if they've been working well for you in the past several years, they will continue to serve the farmers markets and flea markets you see in the community.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from the council or the commission? Can we double-check on our panel and make sure that our commissioners and those that are joining us are, have been heard?
So what I'm hearing as a general reaction is that you're, you're pleased with the first five chapters, and you think we can probably begin moving on to the next set?
I, I think so, with the suggested changes that we've made.
Right. And we'll investigate those, and we can report back to you on what we find.
And I did feel like I learned a lot about our code, and it was easy to follow through, and I definitely appreciated the tables, especially in the graphics.
I just have one, just one comment going back to... Ryan's going to know this. It's 5C, 17-5, on food trucks and carts.
Uh-huh.
And I see that smile.
I, you know, when I read that, I was wondering if you're going to have something to say about it.
I am going to have. So a couple things. The operating within 100 feet of any eating and drinking establishment, that happens already. And also, just to, and it's also between Second and Eighth Streets, food carts aren't allowed. However, if there's an adjoining restaurant within that district, will food trucks be allowed during any day? Because currently there is.
So food trucks can park on the numbered streets off of Main Street? They can't park on Main Street itself, at least within that, that six-block area?
Why isn't that enforced?
I think it's a question of...
Because it's been going on for months.
So for COVID restrictions, and because the bars could not operate without some type of food vendor, they have to operate like a restaurant. We have made accommodations due to the pandemic.
So, just a curious question.
So the one specifically that I think about is the food truck that operates specifically in front of Brothers.
Correct. And, and I'll be honest, you know, I'm asking this from a different seat for a minute, because I've, I've been also asked to cook there many, many times. And, but I also just wonder with the popularity of food trucks, and I know there's restaurants downtown, but if you had the permission between Second and Eighth Street by, by restaurants to be able to say, hey, we would like to set up down here, why is that such a provided closure just for those restaurants?
I, you know, I don't know, that was...
I mean, I have no problem...
That's the existing regulation that, you know, carried forward.
Okay.
I wasn't here when that was put in place.
That's something I would like to look at. I'm absolutely not saying that food trucks get a free rein of going downtown, but if they talk to a business, or a business wants a food truck between Second and Eighth Street, and they do talk to the adjoining businesses, and, and they're okay with that, or even have a written thing from them that says, hey, you know, even a little sheet that, you know, somebody could say, hey, on these days, we're going to sign this off with, you know, we're okay with them being here. I, I think that's important to allow, because a lot of the businesses that aren't food-related would like to have a food truck or that come down to their business within that district, Second, Eighth Street. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not saying this for all the time, but just for example, we've already asked to, to do it at the Gracie Jiu-Jitsu, which falls in that place on, you know, there really isn't a restaurant. I mean, you've got Greg, Greg and, and the others down the street, either one of those, you know. I guess then technically, over the years, then, then I've been, I've been, I've been cooking, because that was between Second, wasn't it? I got to look here, yeah. So technically, I've been wrong when I've been at Brews and Bikes all these years. But yet, they ask me, Greg Dorito thinks it's great across the street. So what I'm asking is if we have the restaurant permission and the adjoining businesses, if we're in that area, can, can we do something about that? Because obviously, I've been breaking the law for years cooking at Brews and Bikes.
And I was...
And I don't mean that smart. And Greg Dorito has come over and got pizzas for us, and he thinks it's great that we're there.
I was going to say that I was curious about how that regulation would affect if we, you know, if and when we do the Little Canyon Village, or have downtown parking, and we want to have those food, you know, perhaps on a Friday night, or on the weekend, have some food trucks come, and where everybody can come and have food trucks.
I...
Yeah.
This is something we might need to look at deeper, too.
Yeah, and the, the way the regulation's written, it specifically says on Main Street. As Patrick said, the numbered streets are okay. The, the place in front of Standard Oil where Tim has set up before, when Vintage Revival was there, that, that...
That was private property.
That concrete slab, that's private property, so that, you know, that's okay. There, there's a lot of different locations that are right off of Main Street that, you know, you can still accommodate food trucks. But, you know, if the council and planning commission would like us to look at that, we can certainly look at that.
Well...
One of the things that I was going to add was that the numbered streets seem to be working nice, because then people congregate. And so I can see, because currently being issues with parking on Main Street, that it could be a, a service to have the food trucks and people congregating on the numbered streets, but a disservice having it on Main Street itself where all of a sudden it's impacting, like, when Gracie Jiu-Jitsu, I know that you're talking about them asking you, but like when they have classes, and all of a sudden everyone's trying to park and get their kids there, and the bridge across the street is trying to do something, or maybe there's an event at the annex and things like that, too. So it seems like to me, like, a happy medium is being able to use those numbered streets on Main Street to still get everybody together, still be on Main Street, but without taking away the limited frontage real estate, I guess you could say, that the people who are paying property taxes on Main Street need to. So, I don't know, because it's been neat, because like SoCo Chicken has been over by Kaleidoscope a lot, and it's been cool, because people, like, they come and they hang out. But it's not taking, like, parking and that kind of stuff away from those businesses, too.
And I understand that. But usually, a food truck at the most takes up two spots.
That's true.
And, and that's all we take. But I've been asked by Kaleidoscope, which I've, you know, I'm the one who started parking there in the very beginning.
Okay.
I've cooked at Kaleidoscope many times. But I've been asked by the bridge many times to come down on a Friday night and have the pizza truck out front for the kids, which I think is a fantastic idea. I've been cooking at Brews and Bikes for three years. And, and in the beginning, I cooked there all the time, because they didn't have the food, and they couldn't handle it. But they still want us there. But, you know, I, I don't have any, I guess my problem there is, then you've got people walking half a block or three-quarters of a block to get where you're going. You're, you're going, you're not parking to say, I'm going to be here. You're going to this business to be there for them. They're asking us, I'm not saying give a free thing for food trucks to just go park wherever. When I go park at Brews and Bikes, it's because, you know, Kirk's called me and said, hey, Tim, can you come down this night and cook for us? You bet.
That makes sense. I just think that then there might be opportunities for, like, working together in that part. I just feel strongly that the, respectfully, but strongly, that the businesses in any area in the city who have purchased buildings and are paying property tax should be able to have say in it. So like you were talking about collaborating and working with businesses near food trucks, I think that's a good idea. But I think just opening it up in general, I strongly disagree with, because there are people who have bought buildings and put money into buildings and are also trying to run businesses. So I can just see both sides. So that's why I think the numbered streets is kind of a good, happy medium.
And like I said, that's why I'm not saying it's going to be, it's when somebody specifically asks, you have a paper, and say, this is what I do, and then you ask the adjoining restaurants around to sign it. I'm not saying just pull up anytime.
Right. So I think for the sake of the code, it makes sense the way it is. But then, you know, maybe there are, you know, extenuating circumstances or something, but the places that you've talked about have other places next to them. And as far as walking a block or two to get where you're going, I mean, I can say firsthand, like, that's Main Street. You walk wherever you go. Our, our city blocks are very tiny compared to most city blocks.
But, yeah.
Well, I'd like to say this, looking at both sides of what you guys are discussing, I guess the key issue, how would we regulate that? How would we regulate that?
Well...
There's going to be a process that's going to have to be in place, that, like you're talking about, the authorization to do that, how are we going to do that?
Well, I think that's just coming down and maybe getting a permit from the city and saying, on this date, we've talked with, they want us to be in front of their building. And, and because, I'll be honest, I have done it for years down there in front of Brews and Bikes.
Yeah, I know, I've seen you down there.
But this, but this changes that now. And it doesn't change it, I just, I just never followed it, and nobody instructed me in the beginning.
Again, this is, these are the existing regulations that we have for food truck cars now.
No, that's what I said. I didn't know these, and I haven't done it since I've been on council. But, and, and not one person has ever said anything to me about that. But the only thing I did ask, I did ask the adjoining Greg Dorito, hey Greg, do you have any problem with us being down here? Because I do not want to interfere with your business. And he said, absolutely not, and I'm coming to get a pizza, Tim. So I see what Mandy's saying, but I think if a business has this, like, like the bridge, you know, there's no restaurants close to the bridge. Down a block.
Well, but I, yeah, I can see there's opportunities where you can feed the kids pizza and stuff.
For feeding the kids, you know, they've asked us, and I've, and I'll be honest, I didn't know this, and I just, we just haven't worked out of time yet. But, you know, we'd be parked out in front of the bridge. I'm not interfering with anybody else's. But I, I think it could be something that we could do, that instead of saying, between these streets are closed, no, I think if you work, like I said, I'm willing to work. When even when I've worked over at, at Vintage Revival, when it was there on, on Seventh and Main, I always went over and talked to the people at the Owl, and just said, hey, I'm not hurting anything. And they're like, absolutely not. And they're there again. They came, all of them, every time we're there, we're coming over for pizzas.
So I think this is something we need to probably dig a little deeper into, because I do specifically remember conversations of existing restaurants that are brick and mortar, feeling that there's an unfair advantage if food trucks come in on kind of their ground, like you said, they pay the property taxes.
We do have a Main Street program manager who's fairly well-connected with the businesses up and down Main Street. We can probably ask him to look into this and have this conversation with the merchants along Main Street.
If they're, yeah.
And I guess the other thing you got to look at is, and I don't mean this smart, if you just close it off, look what you're doing to some of the businesses by hurting them. Even down at Eddie's, Eddie's Garage, you know, I parked there, you know, and those are special things that he does down there. And, but if you're just going to close it to food trucks, I think, I think that's...
I think we're digging deeper to see if there's some kind of compromise that can be made.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, and, and some of the events that, you know, I know Eddie's has done in the past, is, you know, they actually closed the block, and that's treated more like a special event, which, you know, a special event, the food truck would be allowed in that location.
Right.
So there, there are some caveats and carve-outs, but we can certainly look into this. And as Patrick said earlier, if we're going to change the code, this is the time to do it.
Right.
All right, so there's some more homework for you. Any other homework that needs to be done? I think, and I think maybe as we process this conversation we had tonight, that if there's more issues, please bring them to Patrick and to Ryan, and we'll see what we can do as we move along. But otherwise, I'm really, really pleased with the work that's been happening. So thank you all.
Good.
Any other final comments from council before we adjourn? And thank, again, thanks to everyone involved, and we are adjourned.